Christie.
Actually, that's Angelina today. Christie is out.
Excuse me, Angelina.
No problem.
Oh, I'm glad. All right, is there, um, this is October 2nd, 2024, City Council for the City of Gerhart Public Meeting. Right now, I'm gonna ask, is there a declaration of any conflict of interest from the council?
No.
No.
No. Hearing none, we're going to go immediately to the approval of minutes. And the first one is the public hearing and regular meeting of the City Council for Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. Are there any corrections?
I have a correction.
Okay.
It's on the second page, at the very bottom. The third line from the bottom says, what city planner Phillips said he did not believe they discussed this. Phillips is listed here as the possessor, and that's his name. So they thought that we should go.
Thank you very much. I did not catch that. Any other corrections? I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the hearing, or, I'm sorry, the minutes from the public hearing and regular meeting in the City Council for Wednesday, September 4th, 2024.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's, okay. This is really a tough one. Executive session for the City Council, Wednesday, September 4th, 2024.
I'll make a minute to approve the min, or I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session of the City Council on Wednesday, September 4th, 2024.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. City of Gerhart Work Session of the City Council and the Planning Commission Minutes for Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. Are there any corrections?
Yes.
Okay.
Page four, bottom of the page, um, I could be wrong about this, but I don't think so. It says, Planning Commissioner Halford inquired on the ability to achieve a net loss. I think it's supposed to be a known net loss?
It, it is no net loss.
No net loss?
Yeah.
So we add the no?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Are there any other corrections? I'll take a motion for this.
I'll give you a motion to approve the minutes from the work session of the City Council, uh, Tuesday, September 17th, 2024. Should I say the joint work session of the Gerhart City Council and Planning Commission on Tuesday, September 17th, 2024.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, I'm going to do not see that. I'm going to move my mayor's report to the end of the meeting. I'm also going to ask for consensus that we change and have Bob Maury make a a very short presentation at the visitor's section. It's not on our agenda. It's gonna preclude us from doing any kind of debriefing, but, uh, I think it's very important that we hear what he's got to say. So if we can, uh, vote in favor of that, I'd appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. All right, good. And the other thing I want to do is, we've got a young couple and mother here that are at the very end of this tedious meeting. For a liquor license application, I'd like to move them to the visitor's section so they can just make their their plea to us and then get out of here so they don't have to enjoy what older people love. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move that. Oh, great. So we have no planning commission meetings. I'm off to the races until the end of the meeting. Counselor reports, I'm gonna start with you, Preston.
Uh, I was absent, uh, for the, uh, off, after the, um, true.
Okay.
Bye, guys.
You have nothing? Sharon?
Uh, yes, just two things. Quickly, um, I attended the Platte County Goals, uh, meeting. They've had a series of them so far. They need to rewrite Goals 16, 17, and 18, which are beaches and dunes, shoreline, and estuary. Uh, so I attended that, because I'm just trying to understand everything that goes into that. Uh, and then the other thing is, I, uh, volunteered at the emergency preparedness fair up at Camp Riley up on Saturday.
I got a question about that rewrite of those goals.
Yeah.
Is that because of FEMA's pick 'em? Or is it just something they had already?
It's because they haven't done them since, I think it was 96 or 97, and they need to be more in alignment with state books, state goals.
Which could be changing anyway. Thank you. Dana?
Uh, okay, um. I did a fair amount, but I'm gonna keep it short. Uh, heard from a lot of citizens. Uh, topics discussed this month was, um, complaints about contractor work hour limitations, the proposed tree ordinance, the fire station location, um. Spoke with the Fire Chief Crowley from Pasco, Washington, at the request of a citizen, um, about a project that they did up there. Comparison, and I got some, some details. Um, attempted to contact Rachel in Washington about, uh, again, requests from another citizen or same citizen. Asked questions about the fire station they recently completed there, still doing research on that. Also attended the FEMA buyout meeting with the Planning Commission, um. Very interesting meeting, very concerned coming out of that as far as how it's not, not only gonna impact our, our folks, homeowners that live in the, the floodplain, but also throughout Platte County, this could affect our teachers, our, our police officers, and yada, yada, yada. Um. Worried about insurance rates for homeowners as a result of it. Um, I have reservations to attend the League of Oregon Cities Conference in Bend, um, in next week or the week after, and they are gonna have a portion of that de, uh, devoted to the FEMA buyout. And I expect that to be a very popular, um, session, and I will do my best to grab myself into that room.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. City officer and reports. And Chief Gregory?
Good evening. I'll be very brief. Stats being the second, they're not complete yet. You should expect them early in the week, next week. Uh, officers are doing great and being very proactive, so everything's moving smooth.
Great, glad to hear it.
Thanks.
Glad everyone's doing well in the department.
Yes, sir. Me too.
All right, Chief Como?
Uh, you guys should all have my report, uh, the full incident, month long, and the breakdown. I'll go through the breakdown real quick, in case you have questions. Fifty-six total calls last month, uh, twenty-six inside city limits, twenty-four were in the district. We sent out, uh, automatically six times, three was the seaside, two was for fires. One was for the big, uh, MCI mass facilities and a car crash that happened by the junction even on. Uh, most of the warranty infrastructure fired into, um, Fire Marshal's Office of Mobilization for Warranting Fires. We received a zero time box. Unless there's any questions, that's all I got.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Chief. You, okay, master money.
Uh, well, September happens to be kind of a financially slow one for us, as far as revenue goes. Uh, we anxiously await our property tax coming in as those statements start coming out for our community. Uh, in revenues, we did have in 10-0013 fines and order features. Uh, the city's portion of processing municipal court, uh, was distributed. So when we, um, our court clerk processes all the payments and distributes money out to the state and to Platte County, the city also recukes a portion of that, and so we had a payment there. Um, the building department in Fund 40, uh, has gained momentum again, uh, just like last year. It was kind of quiet in the month of July and August, which is surprising to us since it's our driest portion. But, uh, that department has been very, very busy in processing, uh, lots of construction-related permits. Uh, in expenditures noteworthy was a payment in the city auditors, which is split between the general fund and water. A payment in 10-1060 for the city's annual church rental software, which tracks and monitors, um, at all times. Uh, people who post listings, it searches on the internet for addresses and, uh, sends notices to us if people are trying to, uh, do illegal S T Rs in the city. Annual payments in the police department, uh, in 10-12630 for just services for, uh, our services provided by Lexible. And 10-1270 for the use of, uh, computerized law enforcement, electric management software, which, uh, this will be our last year using that particular software. The county is transitioning over, so this year we have to transition here between the two. So we have to pay both of them as we move over. Uh, fire staff had some conflagration, mobilization personnel costs, and there was an orderly payment to the Gerhart Volunteer Tire Fighters Association for the volunteer gas and completely reimbursement. In Fund 30, the water operating fund, there were expenses in 30-3061 for waste water disposal. So there is, uh, waste created, uh, in the making of water, the wastewater plan, and we have to have that removed, and we have to take it up to Longview or Clascomine, St. Helmut maybe, there's a couple of different places to take it. Um, 30-363 for continued support for our water rights permit compliance requirements with the state of Oregon. And 30-3064 for the city's water purchase for warranty. Uh, there was another payment in Fund 71 for the city's groundwater modeling service project, uh, so that's been submitted to the state. And we had to pay a processing fee and a part of the payment to the company that helped us prepare that. The city had used emergency procurement, um, rules for two recent unforeseen circumstances here in the city. Uh, the city's external generator malfunctioned, which is the one that's right over here that supports our fire, city hall, and police and public courts. It overheated and stopped working. Um, we could smell fire, I don't know if we saw fire. Uh, an emergency evaluation from Cummins, the manufacturer of that generator, uh, had to be ordered, and so they came down and evaluated it and attempted to repair it, and that quote was, uh, around, around $11,000, so it was over the $10,000. But they were the people that we bought it from, and they needed them to evaluate it, and at this point, um, looks like it probably might not be fixable. So we'll have to move on, this is just happening. Uh, the second incident was an issue with a chlorine storage tank that, um, has developed a slow leak. It's not an emergency at this point, but there is a lag time to get the, um, tank ordered. So we did, uh, an emergency tank replacement, uh, to immediately have it ordered and get it on that building timeline for them to be able to, so. That's my answer.
Thank you.
Peter? So Garrett and I are both continuing to work with, um, the outside folks, 3J, that are helping us with our buildable lands inventory and housing needs analysis. Um, it's been a very, they've been very cooperative, and they've, um, in Garrett's been a great job, and Angelina as well, get it, done a great job of giving them the data they need so that we can build upon the work that we did in 2019 instead of kind of reprimanding the wheel. So, um, I've been happy with their responsiveness. The O G E C, that's the Oregon Government Haptics Commission, just sent out, um, some rules that they have developed that are going to be getting implemented. Uh, the O G C itself is going to be the entity doing the training, all elected officials, and I believe planning commission members as well, probably budget. Um, committee members are going to have a mandatory training. I read through all the rules, and a lot of what they seem to be trying to get at are this concept of what's called a serial meeting, which would be people having a series of conversations, whether it's planning commissioners or counselors, outside of a public meeting. And the the main component they seem to be focused on is that it's acceptable to share research outside of a public meeting, so someone, but not to advocate. So someone could say, like, I pulled the, um, I pulled the regulations of short-term rentals from this, from eight different jurisdictions, or fractional share ownerships. But what you can't then say is, and I think Sonoma's is really good, because that it appears that, that you guys are, are debating towards a, um, towards an outcome. And so this was a major area of emphasis for them. Another area of emphasis for these rules is the use of the executive sessions, which we don't use particularly often. We usually only use them to discuss litigation, um, or to, um, discuss property purchases, but I, I apparently there's some jurisdictions that are having executive sessions, like every meeting. And so, um, they, they're clarifying that, and also, um, these rules are going to impose some civil penalties. So those are, there are other changes as well, but because you're gonna have to go to a mandatory, um, training, I won't get into it. Just be really careful when you're communicating with each other, sending emails or all that. Um, really, the city's business, things happen at public, public meetings so that the public can watch it and, and with all of our electronic devices, it's so easy to make a mistake. So just, just be super aware of that. Um. I mean, we're gonna be discussing the, these FEMA things, and, um, I, I've been hearing a lot more concern from some people related to this, and also having, um, how these FEMA rules are going to, um, I'm just gonna say interact with the governor's housing emergency. It's, she declared a housing emergency, ten-year period. That really loosened up a lot of these rules. And now we have FEMA rules that are going to be going into effect, and obviously, there's no, um, there's no precedent on point because all this is brand new as far as which ones we refer to. So we're gonna be having a lot of discussions about it and trying to navigate our way through what seems to be two compete, very much competing concepts. One of limiting building near floodplains, and the other seeming to allow more building in floodplains. And, you know, state versus federal law, federal usually wins out, but then, you know, uh, statewide declared emergency, that really complicates things. So I'm going to be trying really hard. Um, and so is Garrett, and we've already been having a lot of discussions with Chad and Angelina on these issues as we try and work our way through. And the other thing that I just pointed out more for the public, because I think all of your awareness, we still don't have the maps and guidelines. So we're still, like, we're supposed to adopt this stuff in December, and we don't have it yet. And I had expected it in July, and, cause they had been signaling to us, you're gonna get this stuff in July. We're now at our October meeting, we don't have it. I'm gonna try and come up with, um, creative ways to meet our quote-unquote December deadline of, you know, probably referencing the maps, but saying that there will be local review of the maps, and also of the opt-out process, so that we have language that we've passed that demonstrates we're trying to comply with our requirements, while being completely blind as to what all that looks like. So I'm sure that will be fun for all of us going forward. So that's all I've got, unless you have questions. Yeah.
Don't you think FEMA's got their hands full with happening the East Coast? Do you think we're ever gonna get any direct answers from them?
So what they, what they told us this summer is that we had to demonstrate compliance with these requirements, those requirements being their kind of updated maps and other requirements related to floodplain issues, and I really want to do that. But we can meet our obligations, but again, like, it's totally outside our control when we'll get when we'll get model rules and model maps, and anytime we get these maps, invariably we have to ground truth them. I mean, it's the same thing with our buildable lands inventory, we had to ground truth it because they have all these acres west of the no build line as being available for development. So, you know, we're unique as compared to other cities, and, um, when groups are just like, oh, their zoning allows for five units per acre, and they have a X number of acres available, we'll just assign that number. That doesn't work because we've got crease and floodplains and no build lines and the other line that was the polymer line in 1979, and then we have to figure out which ones are applicable, and it just complicates everything, so.
I, I have a question for you. Um, so when, when we're talking about, I mean, wh, one of the impacts on the homes, let's say, for example, our homes are, I'm a homeowner along the Neocoxie, and I'm now affected by this FEMA buyout. Um, what concerns me is those folks, they're gonna have, they're gonna have to get used to some rules that they've never, I mean, you, you would typically, living there, you would think, oh, I can just throw down a couple of papers, it's not a big deal. But according to FEMA buyout, no, it is a big deal. Now I have to get an environmental report of some type or an impact report and a permit. So something that, you know, could, would, would have cost me 10 bucks in the past, will now cost me exponentially more. Not only that, but I'm wondering, or I'm worried about how this is gonna affect our insurance rates, because, you know, insurance rates are affected by the cost to replace or repair. And if they have to do those same permitting in, 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 um, studies in order just to do a simple repair to a home, um, it's gonna run up the cost of insurance too. That's what warranties worry about. They're saying up there that their cost of insurance in some cases is gonna go from $288 to $10,000 a year.
Yeah, and, and the other challenge that we have is compared to other jurisdictions is that all of these areas are kind of fluid. So, you know, the, the people are very frustrated that we don't have, you know, hard rules around the estuary and stuff, and it's because it, it changes. It can change over time, so we have a dynamic situation versus like a, a limestone-lined river in Kentucky, you know, that really doesn't move. So it's just, it, it is a lot of challenges, and, and that's why there is that, we have the three options. One of them is that, that property owners can do basically kind of a, um, a more in-depth uh, letter or map revision for this, if, if the dynamic situation changes or if it's not accurate, and so that's probably gonna be more important to us than jurisdictions that don't have these sort of fluid situations. So it's, it is gonna be, it's really gonna be challenging, even if we have all the data we need from the feds, from FEMA, this would still be very challenging for us. So.
And it, and also, it, it bears repeating, I think that as of August, they are no longer accepting permits to bring in fill to get yourself out of a flood zone. If you were previously in a flood zone, you can't raise up the the level of bringing in fill. That's, that's a, that's not.
Right, so one of the, one of the most counterintuitive things of all this is that you used to be able to get, easily get, uh, not easily, wasn't easy, but you could get a ladder over map provision, it's called LOMAR, or you could get a conditional ladder over map revision, CLOMAR, in order to demonstrate that you have, like, the cut fill balance, or that you are enhancing the situation versus creating a problem. And that's, they've basically put on moratorium on all that during this process, which again, having gotten CLOMARS and LOMARS, it, that seems like the exact opposite of what they would want to do, but that's what they're doing. So, um, don't put any fill down.
For favors.
Or, yeah, or do simple, I mean, even, I mean, this could even impact if you just wanna repair a door, right?
Uh, I, I think if, if it's, if this, if this structure's existing and you're getting repairs, yes, probably, that's probably gonna be grandfathered in, but the, the insurance that people are, the homeowner's insurance, the flood insurance is not. I mean, that's gonna likely go up, so.
Just also gonna affect property value, send your, for you to sell your home, that's kind of scary. Thank you, Peter.
Yeah.
That's it, Peter?
That's all I've got.
Thanks.
Okay. Ben?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, just a couple of things. I, the Water Resources Division has accepted and, uh, given a case file to our water rights application, so that is continuing to move forward. Uh, that was with work with Todd Groundwater and Hyatt Geosciences, that would be their marketing, so I don't have anything to report on, on that, uh, but just a little more, I would like to know. Um, the, uh, team is doing great, uh, police and fire are very busy. Uh, the courts have been busy with a lot of the tickets and things that the police have been writing, and so, uh, do speak on it. Um, or we'll see you in court. Uh, it's been going really well. Uh, the Public Works Department has been, been doing great. There was a, uh, a water main break, uh, this week. Uh, excuse me, the end of last week on Friday, and, uh, that break was caused by a utility company, uh, drilling into our water line, not once, but twice. Um, they hit it the first time, didn't create as much of a problem, and then the second time it went pretty well. So those who've experienced some, uh, discolored water and things like that. Uh, it wasn't about an aged water system, um, as I saw on some of the online posts. This is probably in one of the newest parts of town. It just didn't survive the drill every, uh, to go in there. So I was very proud of our team for getting to that very quickly and fixing it. I let water line survey, also the Public Works Department had completed the lead water supply survey, which is required I, uh, for us, for a healthy water system, and, uh, police to report, no lead lines were found. Uh, not only in Gerhart, but as far as I know, none were found, uh, during that survey in Oregon. So, uh, we were in a very good shape along with the rest of Oregon. Uh, October City Council meeting highlights, the blog and the video for tonight's meeting is gonna take us a few extra days because of the employees on vacation, but those will be posted, the video for this meeting, the day after, uh, excuse me, October 10th and 11th is when that will come out. 10th or 11th, depending on how things go. Uh, and then the last thing is Emergence Cash Day, October 27th, uh, 9 to 11. Uh, at the fire department, Christie will be there to sign people up that want to store items and goods in our reserve storage space up in the hills, uh, in case of a, uh, natural disaster. Um, also, it's good to have, uh, Mr. Garrett, he appears to be online. I know that he's been on the East Coast and going through a lot of these things with the, uh, hurricane, and his community was quite devastated. So I'm very glad that, uh, him and his family are safe, and that he's here tonight with us, albeit by phone, because he doesn't quite have enough internet access to make Zoom work, so he is, uh, phoned into our system. Uh, for now, that's all that I have. If there's any comments.
Okay, great. Okay, so what we're gonna do now is go to written and oral public communications. Anyone wishing to address the City Council concerning items of interest, not on the agenda, may do so at this time. All remarks will be limited to five minutes per person. Requests to comment electronically must be submitted by email to thecityrecorder@info@cityofgerhart.com, no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting. In-person attendees wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to the meeting. Okay. First, we're gonna go with the written comments, which are probably at the, underneath the Governor Kotex letter, and if you go to the very- And if you go to the very back, there are, it's a letter from Deanna Mansell, there's a Justin Gibbs. And.
There was a late submission today too.
I'm sorry, what?
There was a late submission today too that was on our desk and we got here. Go forth.
Uh, and then there's the uh. Airport letter. From Randall Henderson. Hey, any questions about these written comments? Okay. Don't. We'll get to you, honestly. Shannon Smith. Please state your name and address.
Okay. I already did.
Yeah.
You'll you'll get sick of me with this, but.
I. I didn't wanna say I am.
It's good because it's in our comp plan. Um. I um, the request may be a minute past, but there is a video I'm about to show that is runs two minutes fifty one seconds.
The video is?
The video is, yes.
Okay, I gotta go into my office and run this or I'll come over twice.
Okay, hold on. Shannon Smith seven seven four Pacific Way, Gerhart, that way. The video that Chad is queuing up is of a flyover of the length of Nea Coxie Creek from the estuary to about the forest up by the reserve. Um, it was done above tree line by Paul Buffington, one of our great guys in town. And I'd like you to imagine an eagle or an osprey. And additional watch for the sections of forest that are quite big blocks as the video um, goes past. And it goes pretty quickly, so. And that's music. There you go. So I think we got a sound. Any sound? Either sound, there you go.
Hey, so the music's very nice in my office.
I'll bring a little speaker check. Thanks, Paul. Um, it runs a little slow. Picking up me. There you go. Um, it runs a little slow on this one. My speed must be faster at my house. Um, I'll post this to some websites in town. This is Paul Buffington also has it on his site. Um, my emphasis for this was to convey a couple of things. Um, one, this is a classic treasure of Gerhart. We have public beaches, thanks to Tom McCall, now decades that we've gotten to know, we love and cherish. We have an estuary that is phenomenal with rich activities and all sorts of fun and beautiful changing scenery. We have Nea Coxie Creek and for probably the last um. What? I've been coming here since I was three, so a long time it's been assumed it would just stay the same. I now live around it or right on it and it has changed. Um, it has flooded three times since I've been here since two thousand and seven. Um, not extensively, but enough to know that things are a big deal for the tides and et cetera. And our weather storms um, that are much more intense as we know from now North Carolina to Florida and. Um, communities down south that it can be ten times whatever the worst forecast ever was. So I just would like our community to be mindful of the change coming and the change that already exists for our lovely place. I would, the other part that's changed is in the last ten years since I lived at my place. The plots and land along the creek have changed from being classified as unbuildable to now undeveloped. Um, that has changed a bit of the uh, interest in building there. And of course, different things are uh, changed now for septic, et cetera. But they tend to be places that are risky and have challenges for human beings to live in. Both of the forests that exist there, as well as now we know the water race and the variability. Bellingham, Washington looked at their trees and their forests in their community and sought to do an ordinance to inventory them. On an emergency basis because they worried about the loss of these ancient trees, their historic trees. Like we have most of the trees you see in that video are three hundred years old. So I would encourage, I brought a copy of it, I will send it to each councillor of the. Bellingham ordinance that gave six months to the city of Bellingham to do a complete inventory of the resource they had. Not piecemeal it plot by plot, but actually look at the comprehensive um, treasure like we have here. So I'm gonna leave this with and email each of the council members. Um, but I'd like you to think about, again, this part of our plan. What are we gonna leave for future generations? I think we've taken the creek for granted for a long time. It would just always be there. It wouldn't be uh, built upon enough such that wildlife would stop coming. There's risk of that. One minute, thank you, Karen. Carrie, um. I want us to think about this as the third treasure of your heart. We have estuary, we have beach, we have our creek and it's special. It has all sorts of wildlife and activities just like our our um, our ocean side does. Um, I will post also a petition for citizens to add their voice to encouraging the city to take some action on this. To really look at the big picture. So that would be also posted in a couple of sites for you to participate in. Um, and sharing your views on why this is important to our community and why we really need to take steps and communicate. Why we really wanna save it comprehensively, not just spot by spot. So thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, next up is Deanna Mansell. Please state your name and address.
Um, I'm Deanna Mansell, twenty nine forty five Highway one oh one, door. I um, I could just expand upon the the letter in your packet on the seaside airport. Did, you know, some further research. So I would like to speak on the zoning text amendment issue to allow seaside airport expansion. Expansion of uses on the R A zone. The minutes from the January twenty twenty four airport committee meeting indicate that the airport needs more tie downs and pavement within city limits. Ultimate goal is wider runways and an extension to Oster Road. Why is this a bad idea? The R A zone is an agricultural zone that is compatible with airport uses. Gerhart has the airport overlay zone. Uh, ordinance that was established in February thirteenth nineteen eighty to further protect the airport. From incompatible airport uses or in incompatible plane uses. Each city has the right to adopt their own comprehensive plans and zoning around the airport. The R A is the minimum of one acre lot. The airport overlay zone allows for non-conforming uses before the effective date of the ordinance. Regulations are not retroactive, which means the requirement to remove, lower, other changes or operation. Of any structure or tree under seventy five feet tall are grandfathered in. Um, the existing paved runway footprint within the city of Gerhart was completed before nineteen eighty as well. So that's kind of grandfathered in, okay. Reading the Airport Land Use Compatibility Guidebook from two thousand and three. Are the limitations and restrictions on allowed uses within the four airport zones. Runway Protection Zone, Approach Surface, Direct Impact Area and Secondary Impact Area. The Transition Zone fans out five thousand feet. Within the Runway Protection Zone, no structures are permitted within five hundred feet of the runway. Residential density shall not exceed one unit per acre. Five hundred feet to fifteen hundred feet is two units per acre. Under this criteria, I observed numerous encroachments in the Runway Protection Zone. But all these properties are grandfathered in and so are the spruce trees. Think what would happen if Gerhart didn't text amendment on that land south of Oster Road. Seaside's ultimate goal is to extend the runway. In twenty eighteen, the Oregon Department of Aviation updated the Oregon Aviation Plan for Seaside Airport. The capital improvement plan may recommend additional projects that will be needed over the coming ten years. Developed as part of the Oregon Aviation Plan, several projects are identified as necessary. Improving the airport to to meet all the airport's goals. Action needed to meet criteria. Extend runway seven hundred and eighty nine feet costs one point eight million dollars. Water the runway width ten feet costs one point eight million dollars. Fuel depot two hundred thousand dollars. The current airport committee has totally ignored the hundred year floodplain and wetlands. That would restrict runway extensions and adding pavement for more tie downs. The FAA Executive Order one one nine eight eight dated nineteen seventy seven. Floodplain management and protection, all airport development must avoid the floodplain. Actions in a floodplain must be designed to protect the natural and beneficial values. Because the funding isn't likely to come from the FAA. In February twenty twenty, Seaside's Public Works Director, Theo McDowell, sent a letter to the Port of Astoria. He requested assistance for repairing taxiway and runways, tie downs and anchors. The port's response, we've been instructed not to talk to you about the airport because of the accident at the airport. So in two thousand and eight. Um. The plane took off. From the runway, the engine was sputtering. And the next thing I knew. I heard the explosion and somebody called me on the phone and told me airport hit a hit a house. I went over there, found out that that the plane had killed three children and the two people. In in the plane. Some years ago, when I was on the airport committee. Um, the the city of Seaside had had proposed that all of the property owners around the airport. Uh, assigned a whole harmless easement agreement just so the city. City won't be held liable. That idea never took off, so this airport is very unsafe. And I'm alerting this council of the potential actions by the Seaside Airport Committee. That may have negative effects on the residents of Gerhart. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Okay, Penny, would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Kenny Sable, eleven forty nine North Cottage Avenue, Gerhart. And I might be putting up the the horse before the carriage here. I read Mr. Moore's proposal to give the city land to to uh, put the fire station down there. My concern, because I have a lot of friends down there too, is has anybody checked with all those people? That this is a highly residential area and it could be a super nuisance to them. And that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Short and sweet.
I believe that's Marilyn Gilbaugh's.
Gilbaugh.
Gilbaugh.
Yeah.
Did you sign in?
No. Oh, oh, I thought we were just saying in to say we were here. I have nothing to say. I'm here.
Thank you, Marilyn. Sorry about your name. I do that at least once a meeting.
All right, good. Short, sweet is missing.
Short and sweet. Okay, so we're gonna move on. This is going to be the time that. The Sender's Wedding application is reviewed. And you all have that at the end of your packet. And would it be Mrs. Sender or would it?
It was the Senders.
Mrs. Senders.
They turned the sender with a in plural.
Thank you.
It's okay, I did. I had the two last before I said that. It wasn't Sanders.
All right, so here you are.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Lisa Senders.
Uh, Deanna Andrews, please.
Deanna Andrews, one oh one North Ocean here in, do you want Portland?
No, just.
Okay, one oh one North Ocean and um, we're here to make application for the special event, which is Paul and Justin wedding in July. Um, across the street from our house is the park, the Dunes Park. And um, I understand this is kind of a case of first impression that this is the first application made for a special events license. To serve alcohol at the wedding, wine and beer um, and food. And all with licensed servers and two event planners who will be watching for six to eight hours during the time of the event. And there'll be music and celebration and happiness and no worries about floodplains or. I'm happy to report. Um, and I did have one question if, and I'm certainly willing to address any question the council may have and I appreciate your time.
Do you have one question?
I do.
Okay, what's your question?
Well, in number five, on the conditions of use, it says obtain event insurance and provide evidence five dozen days in advance of the event. Coverage in the amount of five million dollars per claim, naming the city as an additional insured. I called the insurance company that you use for events here, like Fire and Ball and all of that, the Dancing in the Street and Selling About Hall. And they said, it's not, they cover an aggregate claim, but not per claim. So we have seventy five people at the wedding, each person could file a claim and it would farts. And if they each wanted to sue for five million dollars, they could, but the insurance company says, no, we don't do that. So I, my question was, would it be okay just to submit to the same insurance company you guys use for city things like? Because I can't find insurance, but we can't afford to pay five million dollars. Because I can't find insurance, but we can't afford to pay five million dollars for a claim. And I would think the city really meant that per claim. And it's, Peter, do you want to look at that? Probably have more experience than me.
Yeah, I, I didn't devote this form, but my guess is the intent was per event.
Aggregate claim.
Right, so like for, for each event. Like so the Fire and Ball would have aggregate of five million dollars to that event. If there was day two, they would need to get a second policy for day two.
Okay, so I think that just to me, me, from a legal standpoint, I feel like that should be amended to say, and I can resubmit it so that it says that, just so we're protected as well.
I mean, it's up, up to the council to, to interpret that, but that seems still likely.
Well, it seems hard. It doesn't seem reasonable that, for example, when one of our businesses, the Pacific Way, we tell them to, that they have to change their insurance requirements based on the number of folks that they have coming in per night. So I think that you're correct.
And if that's reasonable. So should I, should we redraft it so that that's clear from a legal standpoint?
We could just cross it out and write aggregate, and I could initial it.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem with Peter doing that. Does anyone on the council have a problem?
No.
Not me? Okay.
So that was my own concern, but I want to address any concerns you may have as a council.
Does anyone on the council have concerns?
I would just like to make sure that if we do approve this, that law enforcement has a special note on their calendar to make sure that we are fully staffed on that day. We're aware of it.
Okay. Uh, the other thing is I've got number two and number three. I don't have number one. I'm, uh, it's kind of like I've got missing parts to the whole.
I think that's more of a page reference. There should just be three pages attached to this entirely. The second one is the, uh, what else, or the applications that we were just talking about.
Right.
And then the third is the addendum for the events application, but I don't think there's many of the pages.
Okay, it's just when it starts with number two, it makes me wonder where's number one.
What is number one?
I think number one is the prior page.
The prior page?
So there's the, there's the application is essentially number one, and then number two and three are the narrative functions of the application. Or maybe we just.
The application should have two sides. She's, she's expanding on.
Oh, the application has two sides and I only have one. There's my problem. No, I will get a copy of the two sides. Thank you. My problem.
I, to me, it looks like a narrative, and she's referring to number two, where it says, see addendum on next page, and then she goes, number two, that's her narrative to that. And then we'll go down below that, this is number three, that's narrative for now.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that for me. Uh, does anyone want to make a motion or just, we just need consensus, right? So all those in favor of giving them?
One question.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Didn't interrupt you. I have a question. Just in general, and this is not impugning that your guests are going to be wild and crazy by any means. When people are drinking, half-drunk cups of alcohol get left around. They might end up maybe not in the park. I'm just wondering, who's gonna police the, the leftover and trash scenario?
We're responsible for the trash, that's part of the application. And so the event planner, and we will make sure that that happens. And what we will have are bracelets so that only people who are of age and will not drink will serve the alcohol. And as Chad and I were discussing, if Uncle Bob was off of, you know, someone will go around Uncle Bob and bring him in. But, um, so the two, and the event planners are used to that. So kind of they will signal to us, so then we can provide transportation to Bob or Aunt Jane.
Will your, will the invitees understand that it's to be contained in the park?
Yeah, we're gonna announce at the wedding.
That's great.
Please do that. Now, they will be using bathrooms at the two houses across the street. So we'll have a table where they can fill their drinks. I mean, they're literally just going to press.
Okay, wonderful.
And we'll speak on our wedding. We are the youngest in our family, so we are thirty, but all the guests are over thirty. And most of people already have young children, so it'll be very young children-focused wedding. I think the biggest drinkers at this wedding will be seventy-plus, which will be very young child-focused wedding on names and be second part for little nieces and nephews and family members like that. Yeah, but most of our friends are having kids now too, so. It's a thirty-year-old wedding with most of the drinking being the older.
Are you the one getting married?
Yeah, this is all congratulations.
Okay. No more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Congratulations. Early?
Congratulations. So you can just get the act in.
Get, get.
Yeah, just.
What kind of a story am I gonna start?
Guys? Yeah, so we're gonna move on to the real business of city.
Well, it sounds like you've got pretty serious. That's why I never talked about Peter's stuff.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
I'll give you a half a minute.
Get out of here. Congratulations. Let's have fun.
Okay. And now, Bob, you have a a presentation?
What's your point to care, but I'm happy to. Bob Moore, two-seventy-one U Street, here. Chad, you and I have been talking to what about? A month and a half about different locations on our side. Safety building and do, you know, work on those building. So this ties into conversation. We've done pretty little maps and just about that. Last week, on Thursday, Chad had called me and just told me what he was doing and said, yeah, that's right, that isn't gonna work for public works over there. Because it'd be in floodplain, we have this stuff going on with FEMA right now. And then somebody works for me looked at the front of the school and said, why, why don't we get a fire station there? And in four and a half years of dealing with this project, we had never even thought about it. It tied into looking at the project over the land over on Highway one-on-one, which I understand, Chad, what is the range, that class range that we're talking about?
About nine hundred thousand.
Okay, nine hundred thousand for that piece of property. There has a lot of defects with it in terms of ingress, egress. And Timmy, my wife, Timmy and I were talking and just said, we don't need the land in front of our school, our former school. It's gonna always be a garden. It'll be grass, a few trees. We know where the septic is, capacity is. That makes sense. And then we took the same thing and said, hey, let's transport. Let's look west for access to a public works area behind the old playground there, the fence playground. And again, we're in that landscape that is our backyard, because again, we haven't, Darren knows, we have a, we haven't got this back before yet, but we are submitting to do one single-family house, no further subdivision. We're just gonna use the existing school as one single-family house, no further subdivision allowed on the property. So we know now generally how we want to use the land. It gave us an opportunity to say, hey, let's contact the city. Going through, we're in a time where we're having to make a decision, which our long-term plan for public works, for, you know, public safety building. We happen to have the land that we can donate, so from our standpoint, no harm to us. We can donate it. We need, we're on schedule for planning condition on October tenth to be for an armed one zone for the one house. Now get through that. Once we know we have zoning, so we know what we are working with long term. Then we're in a position to say, let's look at doing something on a side, on the west side of Highway one-on-one near the center of town. And like what you mentioned, we've got something on the other side of the street. You're gonna have to make a decision where you want to be. But it gives you a chance to have two options that will be freehold options. And we'll donate the land if there's a fire station going there. If there's no fire station, we'll keep the land and what I can do yard in front. But you don't have an easy slide. We never have to stage to build either public works or through fire station. You can build and never have to stage. So we aren't trying to figure out where we put our equipment. We can keep operating right where we're at. It's a very doable deal from our end. It's land we are happy to probably a million and a half dollars worth of land if you try to want to buy it. It's not, it's not out there to get. And it's something we can give as a family. So that's the extent of what we're doing. And hopefully by the end of the tenth, people will understand that we are just one house. That's all there is. We have a lot of green open space. And that's where it's at. So that's what happened. It was all spontaneous. It did not even exist as an idea until Thursday night last week. So thank you very much, Carrie. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Hi, Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Thanks.
The property looks beautiful, by the way, but I have some concerns. When you first purchased a property, you invited the city councillors to take a tour of it, and I toured with Paulina Carr group. And at that time, you had mentioned that the classrooms were going to be for low-income apartments. And that you talked about a lot of things. One of them was having a volunteer library. And then you said that you were gonna have a certain, uh, in one of the little modules on the property to oversee the project. Remember that?
No, first of all, never low-income housing, because our initial thought was, by the way, then you learn about the building and say everything you thought was wrong because you understand the structure. What to do, seniors, senior apartment on the side.
Yes.
Seniors, not low-income, so.
Right.
I've been approached by people here who have four bedroom homes, want to stay with their friends and have no place to stay in Gerhardt. That was before we bought the property. And then we were gonna do something outside, but we didn't know enough about the property.
I understand. Okay, then, after that, you had talked a little bit with Chad about donating some of the property to the city. And then later, there was no person on site in one of the little modules, and those modules were taken out and the classrooms were removed. Then you said you wanted to sell the portion of property that you were gonna give to the city, and then you wanted thirty thousand for it.
I'm sorry, I have no idea what you're talking about.
I thought so. Then, then you wanted to put up low-cost housing and live in the main building. Right, which is kind of what you're talking about now. And then you mentioned that you would offer your property to store emergency vehicles while, while they build the public safety building. Then later, you said, no, I'm not gonna store the emergency vehicles there. But now you want to put the public safety building on the property. So my question to you is, you have changed so many times what you want to do on that property. Who's to say you're not gonna change your mind again? Because there have been many, uh, different scenarios that you have proposed or talked about. And I just want to make sure you're not gonna change your mind again. That's my, I guess I didn't have a question. I guess that's just what I wanted to say.
Appreciate your statement. Now, okay, you want to have a response to your statement?
You can, and I might be wrong. I don't know. That's just what I have learned.
Let's just say, from my perspective, for our perspective, you are wrong. Haven't been for a long time. Remember, you and I talked about trying to do maybe a volunteer library, and you were told not to talk to me by Paulina.
No, I was never told that.
Oh, well, that's what you told me. So that's my reflection. Uh, because she didn't want you to be, by getting involved. So this type of stuff has gone on for us for four years. All we've done is make the property look better. I would try and check even bottom and try to figure out what to do with it. We have planning commission last year. The mayor's wife, when we last did this, where his wife said we can put the price for it, six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Never heard the price. But I got to ask Justine, I knew Justine and Susan Penderlins in the school district. Never asked him the price, and Mike Rooker had told me the price that is the finest word. I never knew the difference with the broker. But that came out from the mayor's wife. Then we did a redact, then we did a nice redaction that shows that back at that point in time, when we bought the thing and we were under contract to buy it in November of two thousand and twenty. I look on it and we're under contract to buy it. And I'm looking at the calendar and the mayor, or whoever makes the calendar, do you make it, Chad? Who has to sign off on what's on the calendar, on the agenda?
On the agenda, I, I think so. Yeah, it depends on the situation.
Well, we had a school that I have, it's my wife and I have under contract to buy uh, on the agenda. Well, we had interest because nobody from the city ever gave us a call that was going to be on the agenda, so we listened to them. And then we had a party who had it, maybe at some time under contract, because we never heard of the party before, expressing what they wanted to do with it, was uses that were totally unable to be done in the city in the zone, because they were all commercial uses, which you cannot do on the property. No more commercials. Their objective was to make a profit. They were gonna make a profit, and all the uses they had would require a zone that would, I think it's your multi, your mixed-use zone, Chad, or something rather, you could do forty percent.
Or thirty?
Yeah, you do forty percent commercial on it. But that's the zone that we specifically did not submit an art application because you can't do it. So we listened to that. We felt sorry for them because they were involved with foster children. My niece who works for me has a foster child that they've adopted, we felt. And that's just concerning. We called a broken, and I say, don't think helps. Your wife submitted a hand-redacted redaction from the school district that shows those people showed up at that meeting, meeting chaired by Matt Brown at that time as mayor. They showed up to that meeting, knowing that they were offered by the board, the school board. And this, that was submitted, thank God, her wife got it, except she had redacted stuff over the school's district's reactions. And so they knew they were offered the same price we offered for the property. And they knew that when they showed up that meeting. And they went that whole doggone point to show with Matt Brown, explaining to you what they were gonna do, their dreams. But they'd been notified that they had, there's no to, to get us out of the deal. And we did come in, we came in a price, I think forty percent less than that six hundred and seventy-five thousand, but we closed immediately and took on the risk, and we expected, we signed it for two or three years and had no idea what's gonna happen with the property. We played this game now for four years. So why things change? If you're dealing with that uncertainty, there's a reason. Where we're at now is we dealt with it. I think we've shown that we want to kind of look better coming into the city. We're gonna have to be one house. Last, our last planning commission meeting, the chair ends meeting, we made sure everybody in that planning commission got a chance to speak, and we have to want to correct. Then we written through it before we sent it to you. Because again, it's nonsensical. Garrett recommended, and that was his first meeting as representing the city as planner. Garrett recommended it be accepted with conditions because he had read the request. We had the chair of the planning commission end that meeting by saying, you can't look at past decisions to get guidance, and there's no need for housing. Well, that, fine, I said, thank you. I now know what I'm doing. So we're gonna go forward and we change our entire plan to how we approach the project. Because if you have that type of preconceptions, that's what we've got through with this fabric. So that's how we got her a hat. It's a mosaic. If it gives you some background, it's not directed. So.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no need, we have no need to do a change. Uh, we know where we're gonna, if we get a zone change, we'll we'll have a single-family home, and we're happy to give the land away. If that's not sufficient, I can't give you any better things than that. If we don't have a zone change, we still have no idea what we have.
Well, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Just a second. Bob, my wife has never redacted anything that she's come to. Your timeline is a little skewed because I've only been mayor for two years, and my wife has never come in front of me and done anything with the school property.
Carrie, I'm sorry, I misunderstand. This was on the planning commission meeting. That was the meeting that you went to the Owners Association. Remember after that, that was the planning commission meeting.
Okay.
Or is it, remember what you said? One of my achievements is turning down the rezoning of the school. That, that was, you said at the Owners Association meeting, that was an achievement. You did, you did, remember when I came in and remixed, you never given to even make a decision off?
Okay, thank you, Bob. Um, I appreciate.
So I would just remind you that we have a, a planning commission hearing coming up. And we, I don't know what the outcome of that will be, obviously, because it hasn't happened yet. But an appeal will come to the city council.
Right.
And so I would just, I haven't heard anyone get into the merits of the application. It wouldn't be appropriate for that to happen at this time. get into the merits of the application. It wouldn't be appropriate for that to happen at this time, because that application is in front of the planning commission, but I would just caution everyone. Um, because we do have a live land use application.
Thank you, Peter. Okay.
We're going to finally get out.
Okay.
You have any more questions?
Let's, yeah, I, I have a question too.
Um. Thank you very much for your offer. That's kind of you to make that offer. Um, there's so many moving parts to that. So many questions that we'll have about this. I hope you're not in a huge hurry over this.
Yeah, sure. That is really the benefit that you've got. From our standpoint, we aren't getting any money out of this, and we have no time pressure. So you can take as much time to build the facility. We aren't going to get any money out of it. We're just going to make the land available to build on. And for the city to develop. So it is if you want to ponder it, no matter what we've done, for the past week, live here, we think having a do-hub at Works Facility out before we have space, make a decision, we have two choices. Our station point A down here or down there, but you might find that it's a lot easier to build on, so it'll, because you can test and are you thinking of possibly doing the testing chat on that side essentially?
Uh, yeah, yeah. And that's a discussion that we're going to have a little bit later with the geotech. Uh, but just also a good a point with this is that the Orway family has decided to call. I, their, um, uh, willingness to sell to the city at the moment, they actually have to sell a little bit faster because of family issues, uh, than when, than even wait. Uh, we've got to get through the at the earliest, the November twenty twenty-five uh, election to see if a bond passes before we can purchase the property. They need to sell it before that. So tonight, you're going to hear from Jesse Steiger, uh, from Clough Group in regards to some geotech work that we want to do. We had two sites planned to do that geotech work. So now the Orway's out, uh, we currently only have the one site being considered, which is the current location. Uh, unless that the city council gives us any other direction. Uh, geotech work would be important, no matter where we put the building in your heart as, uh, soils are very, uh, to design the type of foundation for a critical infrastructure building, it is a very expensive piece of that puzzle. And we want to make sure that we build something that can withstand, uh, the possible tsunami, uh, or storms or earthquakes and that sort of thing, or required building, that sort of thing. So long story short, geotech is still on the agenda for a little bit later. It is going to fail. We did have two places, now we're down to one.
So I have a question for you. So if we decide that this might be a site uh, that we need to think about or want to think about, who, would it be Clough or would it be Garrett or both of them who would compare the two sites just as far as, you know, septic elevation? That type of thing. So, I mean, this sounds like a works, big work session to me to discuss all these pros and cons and get the rest of the pieces, some of the other pieces pulled in.
Right. Our intention with the Orway property and with the current location was to do just that, uh, a, a work session to inform the community and the council, what's going on, what we've learned. That's why tonight we're going to be looking at our contact engineer firm and geotech firm. And, uh, yes, it will take people such as Garrett and Jesse Steiger to assist us with collecting all that information so that we can make a good solid report. So if the council was to sub choose, it was an option, we would include that.
Are you good?
Do we have to make that decision tonight?
We can't. This was not on the agenda. We shouldn't even actually be discussing it in depth practice, but Dana, you've got some question?
Well, just about the proposal, and I, and I know he's fought once to get out of here, but I want to ask him publicly, because I know that this is already vital to the public, and the public's already forming opinions on this. So, um, real quickly, um, so you're saying here there's two tax lots, and it's, if I recall, it's like eight point five acres.
Just under eight point five.
Okay, would we have to adjust tax locks, lots or do anything to that?
Basically, what we do, the way we look at doing it right now is we resell the eight point, three, five point three seven acres, the school buildings on. That's the only lot we're dealing with. We'll rezone that.
Three point, I'm sorry.
Five point three seven acres. That's the reasons to an R one, and then we give you how we can end up doing the process thing. Peter can take a look at that.
Okay.
When I
No, go ahead. I'm listening.
That'll be our classes on.
Okay, and then, um, when you guys were talking, have you thought about any conditions you would put on the property? If we were to take it on, um, would it be limitations? I mean, would we own it outright?
Oh, you'll end up owning the property outright. What I wanted to do was make sure that we have an attractive landscape entrance coming into our house, which will be the main drawing out. I also want to make sure that we're looking at an attractive landscape entrance coming into the road that's in front of us. Uh, the house to the east or to the rest of us, and we have an impact entrance there. So we have just, the whole thing is cohesive fold. That's attractive entrance specific.
Okay, so, so just, so I'm clear. How does that work when we do up a bill of sale? Do we, I mean, we show a bill of sale with no, no dollar signs? Do you do this as a tax write-off?
We'll, we'll end up, we'll end up trying to figure out if there's a tax write-off on it or not. It's going to be a gift regardless.
So without, we would need to bring an appraiser to determine what the value would be. Um, because it's worth five hundred dollars. Um, the, I think the geotechnical work, as well as, you know, tsunami and other considerations, and anything we are going to do has to be powered with the voters. Because the voters are going to have to approve this thing. And so they're, you know, they're going to be essentially the ones that are selecting the site and the amenities. But without that geotechnical information and, and other things, people aren't going to be able to make an informed decision.
Right. Um, and, and have you talked to any of the neighbors? Because, um, what you're proposing is, is essentially going to affect the neighbors on your west side, and I don't, it, it's different from the school. I mean, I know that people around here are used to dealing with fire station. That's a little different. If you bought a house next to a fire station, then if you're now being subjected to a twenty-four hour operation where people are showing, ten cars are showing up at three o'clock in the morning, starting up a diesel, going out with sirens or whatever, it could be problematic for the neighbors. Have you discussed it with them?
Remember, none of this even existed since five until last Thursday night, and that's
I, I'm, I'm not trying to make you defensive. I'm asking, what work do we still need to do on this? So that would be?
I think everything comes back to communities. Look, I'm surrounded by residential here with fire fusions going off.
Okay.
If it's two million dollars less to build down there, what does the community want to do? From our standpoint, we'll either have it, we'll give it to you, or we'll keep this long.
Okay.
You make the choice.
And so, so no conditions. So let's say theoretically, thirty years down the road, Gearheart, it, conditions change in Gearheart, um, and they no longer need that property for this. Is it Gearheart's property to sell then? Or does it have to revert back to you? Do you know?
That's a good question. I haven't thought of it, but I'm not going to be here, so we'll leave it.
Well, I hope I still am. I hope I still am. Um, I may not remember this conversation, but I hope I still am. Um, and I'll still be paying taxes. That's what everybody decided to do. Um. Okay, so I, I'd like to make a couple of points since we are on the public, um, that we still, just even though we have an obligation to our in-town folks, we also have an obligation to the fire district, which pays almost a third of our budget. So that's a comment. Um, define low-volume use, because I, I don't see a public building, any public safety building that hosts town hall meetings where we get forty to seventy people as a low-volume use, or when there could be a nat- natural disaster event. Do you think that your septic would, would, um, hold up to the septic allowance?
We'll end up doing this, taking a look, we have data, the someter testing for two winters, and it gives you an idea of where we have septic capacity. You're going to have to have your septic consultant. We use EMS who, of course, uses. So like, it'll give an idea of what your septic capacity, we know where additional septic capacity is.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll be silent.
Okay, um, and buy off is going to be, again, we talked about how that might affect, you know, affect insurance rates, and it also, we're going to have a bond, bond insurance around. Um, and, uh, duh, 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 duh. Also, um, as far as your, your plan, I think you're imagining one large building. But to be honest with you, one of the things that I'm imagining is our essential building is going to be, have to be built very robust standard. It's going to be an expensive building. So I have always, in my mind, and we have got to, to design, but in my mind, I've always thought we would build, have in one building, one that was essential, that was built to very robust standards, and one that was non-essential, that housed offices and other things like that. But I've always, I've never imagined the fire station being permanently on the Orway property or any other property, just to be clear on that.
Uh, Dana, I would agree with you. My approach would be building would be exactly the same, separate the services, build it less expensive, um, essentially.
Okay.
Component, whatever we do.
Okay, and then the last thing I'm going to say is, is just, um, and I, I want to be very careful about saying this because I don't want it, I don't want it to be taken the wrong way, but there, I think that there are some other legal issues that we would have to pursue with the state, because you're a candidate, and you could eventually, you could potentially be mayor at that point. So that could open up some other things that we'd have to explore.
And my council, we discussed, and I've got to recuse myself from everything on it, so.
Well, not only that, but if you, if you were to do like a tax write-off, or if this were to negatively infect your property, this could, that could be a problem of, uh, under two four four point zero four zero. So I, I, we might want to, you might talk to your council about that. Okay.
Okay.
It's a number, but what is it?
I'm sorry, ORS two four four point zero four zero. Um, that says what elected officials can do and what they can't do as far as within their
Thank you. Okay, now we can move on. Next point of business is a three-minute comment. Oh, wait, no, it isn't. It's the ordinance nine four two. Preservation and removal of trees, GZO tax of amendments.
So Garrett is in Nashville, North Carolina, so, um, and we're
Garrett is actually online, Peter.
Oh, he's, he's
He is here.
Okay.
Yes.
Garrett, how do you want to tag you this?
Um. So I can offer some brief remarks, and Peter.
Sure.
Do you like to follow up after that?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Well, you have ordinance nine four two, um, which presents amendments to uh, tree removal regulations in the city of Gearheart. Um, this is something sounds like there's members of the public here that are interested, so I'll give a bit of background. Now, I know y'all in city council are getting quite familiar with it. Planning Commission initiated this discussion in twenty twenty-three and held several public meetings where they discussed potential amendments to the tree removal regulations. A wide range of topics that they considered and ultimately decided that they wanted to focus on improving the information that city staff were getting on tree removals so that they could communicate with other members of the public and understand um, the frequency and location of tree removals throughout the city of Gearheart. So they proposed amendments focused on that purpose. And then throughout the last year, uh, since early twenty twenty-four, uh, city council has made some additional changes to the proposal. Um, most recently with the result that you have tonight, ordinance nine forty-two. Um, so just to summarize real briefly, the city of Gearheart already has tree protections, um, that protect most types and sizes of trees in wetlands uh, within fifty feet of streams and in the beach and dune overlay zone. And ordinance nine forty-two doesn't change those protections. So trees in those areas are protected. Um, ordinance nine forty-two affects trees throughout the rest of the city of Gearheart. And Gearheart already has protections for some of those trees throughout the city. Um, right now, anyone who wants to remove more than five trees has to obtain a permit from the city. And the permit decision is made by the planning commission uh, based on uh, some findings that they have to make on, uh, why you really need to remove so many trees, uh, more than five trees in a single year. Um, and, uh, it does only apply to trees of a certain size. And so that's sort of like the gist of what you have right now. And ordinance nine forty-two that, um, we've drafted to the best of our ability based on city council's feedback. Um, broadly speaking, will protect, um, uh, more trees throughout the city in that now you would have to get a, um, a permit to remove um, any tree of a certain size. Um, and if you want to remove more than three in twelve months, then you'd have to get a permit, uh, from city council, where some special findings have to be made. So we're moving from a five-tree threshold to a three-tree threshold per year. And, um, ordinance nine forty-two also includes uh, some additional protections for trees that are greater than fifty-five inches in diameter. Uh, with those trees, you would have to obtain a permit from city council uh, to remove just one. Um, ordinance nine forty-two also introduces the concept of heritage trees, which are trees that have some unique historic uh, or aesthetic value. And, um, with heritage trees, if the city council, with a landowner's approval, designated a tree as a heritage tree, um, then thereafter, removing one of those would require a permit from city council following a hearing as well. Um, there's some additional changes that city council worked on over the last year, including ones that make it easier for property owners to remove trees when there is a hazard situation. Um, so that city regulations do not cause any property owner to think twice or delay before correcting a hazard. Um, and I think that that is the briefest summary I can give you of the ordinance as we've arrived at it at this point. Um. And I'm going to leave it at that for now, but I'm available to answer questions. And I think that Peter has some things to say as well.
And yeah, we, we also made some changes based on, um, feedback that we got from members of the public, like, under the definition B, we defaulted to the states. Um, the species listed as noxious weeds by the state, the Oregon Department of Agriculture, so we captured all of those trees. And then if that, uh, list updates in the future, if it updates, we won't have to amend our, um, ordinance. We would just note that that's a noxious weed, so it doesn't count. And you know, this has been, this has been kind of a slow-going process, because we've done all these amendments and public meetings and had all these questions in public meetings. And Garrett and I have done our best, made our best effort to anticipate what you as a council would want to look at. And again, this, this is, um, we might not have captured everything. We might not have gotten it right. I have no idea whether this will be adopted or not, but it it kind of reflects what we, what we believe that you wanted us to do based on the comments that were made during the meeting.
Okay.
You mind?
Yes.
Uh, there's a couple of things I wanted to address about this. I, um, spoke uh, with a few citizens in Gearheart uh, who pointed out that the replacement tree size is not practical. So I did some research. I called Brimms, asked them what size trees they carried. Uh, I talked to a place in Hillsborough, and I went and met with the tree gal at Dennis the Seventies in Seaside. And she made recommendations to me. I told her that if at all possible, we'd like to, uh, keep our business in the area, uh, meaning them, uh, among other people. Uh, and so she made several recommendations about wording for replacement tree size, which I thought were excellent. And so I would like to propose those changes, if I may.
Yeah.
Um. Um, her recommendation was that for the evergreens or conifer trees that we say, we describe the replacement tree as being five foot. And then her recommendation for the deciduous trees with it is that we describe it as ten gallon size. Of all of which Dennis's carries uh, would not have a problem procuring.
Ten gallons size?
Yeah. So um, I'd like to propose that we make those changes um, to make it easier on everybody. Uh, the second thing is, um, it seems like there ought to be under, under uh, C. There ought to be worrying about the invasive species. So C, C is the, under the applicability. This section implies removal of trees in the city of Gearheart except uh, and then the exceptions are listed and maybe the invasive tree wording could go under that section because if it's an invasive tree, it can be taken out no matter what.
Well, so when we define tree under B, we specifically said that the, anything listed by the Oregon Department of Agriculture's website was not a tree. So for the, for the entire ordinance, those are trees.
Okay.
I mean, I know it's, it looks like a tree and you're, and you're like, it's not a tree.
It's a little confusing.
It's a little counterintuitive, but it's not, not a tree.
I, it's up, it's up to you guys. I, I just.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can make an amendment if you buy it.
I just think it'd be nice to have it under the exceptions. I, I mean, seems like that'd be a little clearer. And noxious is probably not the right word. It probably should be invasive.
So they're, they're invasive species and then they're noxious weeds.
So should we put both?
I, hey, I, you know, I, I wanted to do whatever.
Why would you want to protect either ones?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do that one there.
All right, listen. And, and are you ready for this? There's one more to that, that we worked throughout this, that Deanna pointed out, and that is that some of the trees that are dangerous to septic are not necessarily listed as noxious or invasive, but yeah, we want to protect those and probably not. Um, and so.
Septic is addressed in here.
Right, I know, but I don't know that there's an exception. As long as there's an, I just want to make sure that there's an exception in there for um, the, the trees that are, are going to be, might qualify as heritage trees because I think, I think if you drive around town, you might be surprised by how many trees could qualify as a heritage, especially protected trees. So what do you think, Peter?
So if we have a separate category that we're exempting because it negatively impacts septic systems, we would need to figure out what those trees are and specifically call those out as part of the ordinance.
Okay.
Because the other two are defined by the state versus this one would be like based on test practices.
And I, and I, and I don't think those types of trees are going to change so much. So I actually personally would be okay with them being listed. I, I did some research today and found that there are some that are, this, well, go ahead and you finish and I'll, I'll talk. I'm sorry.
Um, Garrett, I had a question for you. The uh, point system that's in here for heritage trees, is there a source for that that I can read about?
It's from the city of West Lynn system and the purpose of the system is that if we want to protect trees that have historic or aesthetic value, um, we need to have some more specific criteria to go on so that it's um, the decision on designating a heritage tree isn't um, arbitrary.
Uh, yes, I understand that. I just wondered what the source was. And then another question pertaining to that is the location factor point of values. Can you, do you know why they, or maybe Peter, you know this?
Yeah.
Why they would list commercial areas as more valuable than?
So I, I used to, I used to represent Westland and I still occasionally do projects for them. So if the city of Westland was originally two cities, it was the city of Willamette and then it was the city of Westland. So the historic area um, of Westland is along a road called Willamette Falls Drive. So Willamette Falls Drive itself has the oldest commercial structures in Westland and then the, the neighborhood that's on the east side of Willamette Falls Drive is um, is histor- is the historic designated um, neighborhood. And then on the west, on the west side of Willamette Falls Drive, there's some original kind of cab, not like pioneer cabins, but kind of cabins that have very old, like hundred fifty-year-old oak trees in front of them. So they, much like our historic kind of downtown, they have that little historic downtown and then the other parts of Westland that are commercial are kind of like the highway is for us. So the reason they did that is because they believed, A, in their city, the um, the trees are, the eldest trees are in that area and then um, also because that is the area that has higher foot traffic. So the idea is that people would be able to enjoy the trees because they're in that commercial area that's open to public. Um, and it's quite walkable for Westland because it's relatively flat as compared to the rest of the state.
Can I say something? Sure. I can speak from experience. Any tree that you plant in your yard, you see, waterworks. It's going to get into your septic field. So when you're talking about protecting your septic field, you shouldn't have any trees around your bed. Zero. And the other thing is, I take exception to your drip line and what the, what the root zone is.
It's not mine.
Nice. Okay, but you took it from some, from someplace else.
Nice.
Okay. In the Columbus Bay storm, when the class of fur moved down, it took an acre and a half of ground. Our trees don't go deep because there, there's a lot of surface water. So they spread out. And the more, the more, the closer they are to your septic field, the more they're going to spread out. Because that's, that's where water is. So I want you to be aware of that when you're making up this.
Right, that's an, that's an average. Absolutely. It's not particular to a particular tree. It is approximately.
But if we're talking about, if we're talking about trees that are invasive into the septic fields and, and you can put in a sand filtration system, it's not like that's almost twenty thousand dollars. Okay, it's a huge investment. I mean, the maple trees on my property, they get to be about this big around, they're already in my set.
Can I make a suggestion? Because we're getting so late and we have so many, and it seems like every time we did, we already have identified things that need to change. Could we do a work session for this and then we can hash all of this out? We can get to the other problems we have to do today? What, what do you think about doing that? Because it sounds like everybody has some, some things to suggest and to discuss.
Are you all right with that? It's going to be a fast, soon.
Soon.
A soon work session.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Do you have a problem with that?
No, I think you should have to get back to poker.
Get back to poker?
Poker.
It's a good thing I've got hearing aids. I just wish I would use them. Okay, so we're going to move on and put this into a work session. All right, here we go. Domestic violence awareness month proclamation. Whereas the first domestic violence month was observed in October nineteen eighty-seven, the same year that saw the initiation of the first national domestic violence toll-free hotline. And in nineteen eighty-nine, Congress designated October as the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas the domestic violence is a pattern of assaultive and coercive behaviors, including physical, psychological, sexual and economic abuse, social iso- isolation and stalking that are used to maintain power and control over a person's intimate partner. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's dignity, privacy, security, safety and human, basic human rights, and victims should have felt to find the compassion, comfort and healing they need. And whereas one in every three women and one in four men in the U.S. experience rape, physical violence and/or stalking by an intimate partner in their lifetime. Domestic violence is the single largest cause of injury and homicide for women. And whereas approximately fifteen point five million children are exposed to domestic violence every year. Children exposed to domestic violence experience terror, isolation, guilt, helplessness, grief, and have a higher risk of engaging in criminal behavior and substance abuse and becoming victims of crime. And whereas domestic violence impacts the health and well-being of our community. And whereas it is incumbent on every citizen to play a role in preventing and ending domestic violence, now therefore that the city, Gearheart City Council hereby proclaims October first, twenty twenty-four through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In Gearheart and invites all community members and local agencies to join in this month of observance by speaking out against domestic violence, raising awareness and supporting survivors. Date is the second day of October twenty twenty-fourth. Is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay. We'll sign that after tomorrow morning. Moving on. Architect and engineer and RFP selection committee final report. Robert.
Thank you for calling me Robert. Well, I was a candidate member involved with the selection committee and we had eight architects that we um, reviewed and received, you know, uh, and with, the selection committee independently evaluated all the scores and proposals. In other words, we got the eight architects and then we got all their paperwork, which is about like this. And I know that most of the committee members went through those at least three to four times. And after we reviewed the eight, we got the total down to three architects and that's through a scoring system. And I, I have a comment on this because I think it's interesting that out of the eight, we came down to three. But it's interesting how the scoring was, I think the whole group sort of all came down to three. It wasn't widespread, I don't think at all. So then we got down to three uh, who were invited for interview. We conducted three interviews on September ninth. And the format was twenty minutes, presentation, forty minutes, question and answers. And they were independently scored again and finally, after all this, we came up with uh, one that was uh, very, I feel really, it was very good. And so that was M A A Architecture and Interiors and like I say, the process, I, I've never been in that process before. I've been in construction a lot, but never sit through architecture to see who's good. But I think, you know, the whole group uh, and this group has done both fire and bleeds. Most of the others, you know, were just either fire. So I believe this is probably why they're there and they are very well. And the last presentation that they did with the three, they really stood out, you know, and I, I believe they're going to be favored for C's at Gearheart to utilize. And that's about it. And I'd like to thank Jesse with the class group. He sort of guided us through this whole thing. It'd be very helpful, I think, that all the, all the people involved, so. That's it.
Thank you, Robert. You may ask him one question.
Um, can you give us that idea of what was on the scoring system? Like what criteria were on the scoring system?
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, just.
That's a good. Actually, we looked in their packages.
I think it was in your packet.
Yeah, in, in all their packages, they have, of course, a letter.
Right.
And then relevant project insurance, key personnel and subcontractors, like some of them are in-house and some of them have, oh, approach to site evaluation, approach very important to community development. That was one that we really had to look at closely. And that's pretty much it, you know. But the packets, if you put them all together and you lay them all out on the floor, the way I did was went through each one of them in the first half or the second and then go back twice and three times and on, but nobody, it's interesting, nobody gets to see anybody's score. We had that over to Jesse and then they calculated it down. So like I said, I was very surprised that the group was very tight and came down to the three. And at the very end, it was very obvious who, who, who people wanted, because they were, they were outstanding.
All right. Chad.
There is nothing more that we need to do with that. That was the portion of the presentation from Robert to assist you with getting to know how uh, about the selection. Uh, the next order of business is new business, RFP request for funds to architecture and engineering service. Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, so in July, council approved publishing a request for proposals seeking uh, city architectural and engineering services for the construction of public safety building. The city uh, will conduct architectural and engineering assessments to evaluate the viability and cost of potential sites for public safety buildings. The size, architectural style and specific amenities will be determined through community discussions and consensus over the next year. If the community prioritizes and agrees to fund the project, the city may pursue a broad measure, potentially at an election no earlier than November twenty twenty-five. The class group has handed the development and administration of the RFPs. Ten potential applicants attending the fire police station walk-through with some appointed selection committee members, eight proposals received uh, before the closing day of August sixth. Selection committee went through, as we heard from Robert, an extensive application rating process narrowing down to three, did the interviews and the selection committee uh, was recommending that FFA Architecture and Interiors, who is in attendance tonight to answer council questions. City staff is also requesting funds up to one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to fund the awarded bidders first place of the project, which would include a twenty-five thousand dollar contingency to allow the city to be minimal for additional public meetings or the possibility of another site. We have your motions there, uh, your options, and uh, we also have Jesse that is on site that has uh, an update for the councillors as well. Jesse, if you're still there, let me get Garrett off there.
We're doing the um, kind of the schedule update on the project now?
Uh, I think this would be the best place for people to understand what the next steps are. And I can get that up on the screen for you.
Great, thanks.
And for those that don't uh, know her, that was just a sidebar, the class group.
All right, so we're going to um, kind of skip ahead here. Um, it's a real short presentation. Don't worry about it. It's late. So um, we just covered the, the RFP process. Um, Robert did great. Thank you so much for doing that. Um, so we're going to keep going forward, Chad, to um, really the schedule slide. There you go. Um, so I know this is hard to see on the screen that's in the room. Um, you should have it printed out. Um, this uh, project schedule is really collaborative. This project schedule is really a collaboration between our building committee group. And then kind of after discussions with that, I put together a full project schedule that would show us how we could get to a bond measure, targeting next November for that, for the vote. And then once we had selected FFA, they kind of took a pass through the schedule too and made a few little tweaks there that would work a little bit better with their design process. So this is a collaborative schedule at this point. So really what we're showing is we're targeting the first community meeting sometime in November. And that's really kind of like, this is where we want to get in and listen and understand the project, start to probably develop some success criteria for it. And then we're showing the second community meeting. We're, we're showing it kind of like before the holidays, before Christmas. That's the one where it might have to get pushed to January. I think there's a little flexibility in that one. And then we've got a third community meeting, which would be targeting in February. And that's just kind of where some of the change happened is the next community meeting would be several months later, probably in May. And you can see from the schedule, this part that FFA put together, that they really just needed a bit more time to do some design work and also to get a cost estimate. Those things take some effort. It's usually an iterative process. And so we just needed a bit more time in between kind of the third community meeting and the fourth to like properly get a cost estimate in there. The other modification we made from kind of a previous schedule, this is really, I had presented a schedule at the August town hall. It was in a different format, but by and large, like the dates and the, the topics haven't really changed all that much. So what we did though is we moved one of the council work sessions. We had them like kind of get, previously it was like, let's get through all these community meetings, then we'll do a couple of work sessions. Then we'll do the council meetings. But FFA had a great idea. They're like, in our experience, we feel like we really want to loop in council kind of before we get to the end of this. So we showed like a midway check-in, a council work session so that we could make sure we're all on the right track and then get some input or feedback at that time. So we're, yeah, we're targeting about February for that. And that allows us a little bit more design time to incorporate some of your comments, get the cost estimate, and then we'll be back for another work session after that. So that's kind of, and then once we get through all the work sessions, the community brings, brings forward, hey, this is the option that the community is recommending. Then we have a work session and then a couple of full council meetings for, so we can engage in some public debate and comment about it. And that still gives us some time to kind of decide on the bond measure or other financing strategies for an August filing deadline, if that's the, the route the project decides to take. And then I know you, several council members had asked like about when, when you're going to really be participating in this project. And so I kind of added to the top that one of the great ways to do it is I think we'd like to make sure we, you're properly invited to all the community meetings. I think your attendance there would be fantastic. I kind of added at the top that was more about listening and learnings. I think, you know, really allowing the community to drive this process seems like a, a winning strategy. But if you guys are able to attend and listen and learn and hear all the comments, I think that will be a great learning experience over the next couple of months. And then somewhere in the mid-winter, let's say February, that's where we're really going to be getting a lot more of your input and feedback. So kind of thinking about it in two different kind of phases for council involvement is where we are landing right now.
All right. Thank you, Jesse.
You're welcome. Oh, I forgot. I had one more slide. I'm sorry. We talked about, I talked about with Chad is another way I've seen like councils or boards really give the teams some direction is, you know, you, you could have an internal work session to basically develop maybe a short list, like five guiding principles for the design team and the project building committee team to follow. You can kind of develop some success criteria. So we're talking some like high level project goals so that as the building team starts to make some, you know, guided little, either just not really decisions, but we choose a path to go down that we can take into account the guiding principles that you've set for us so that we're always keeping that in our minds and it's, it's factored into how we choose different directions to take in the design. And then, yeah, then like, you know, then I described the other things. And then we've got an opportunity to engage with the public at future council meetings. And then the city website blog will continue to, will be updated and we will continue to share like meeting minutes from our building committees and things like that. That is all I had prepared for our presentation, but we're happy to answer questions. I do want to introduce FFA. They're in the room. You can give them a little wave, maybe. And they're happy to answer some questions if you like.
Okay, thank you.
Just one question for you, Jesse, before we go, just to make sure that we're, we're clear on what you're saying. In, in plain English, you're saying you want the council to, in this beginning portion, this is going to be community driven, but you want us to create some kind of parameters and then measurements or some, some kind of a mission statement and then some kind of way to measure our progress towards that goal, right? So that they're not just all, you know, the community is, is, we have a controlled process and not just everybody asking, what are we doing here?
Yeah, I, I think that's, yeah, by and large about what we're getting at. I think the, the, how it helps the teams is if the council has, you, you have in your own internal work session, that council is kind of agreeing on a set of guiding principles for the team to consider. And so that's the thing that helps give us direction and that, that council has some alignment. So we feel comfortable with proceeding down the right path. So if that's, you don't have to do that step. But I believe it's really helpful so that we're not missing the mark for, for your vision for this, for this building.
Well, the funny thing is, we're talking about having a work session for trees, so you might.
So we can come by, we can build. And that would be sooner than later.
Correct.
Okay.
Like real soon.
Like real soon.
Yeah.
Got it.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for FFA and Interiors?
No, I was just, I was delighted to see your background. I was glad to hear what Robert had to say about you. And I hope that the public pays attention to your experiences, not only on the coast, but I know that money is a big concern and size is a big concern. I would like to see that you're working with some small, smaller cities and also some volunteer organizations similar ours and police departments. Thank you.
You got anything, Preston? Rita? You did good. Okay, gracious. I don't have any questions, but I'll take a motion.
I move to award the architectural and engineering project to FFA Architecture and Interior and approve funds requested up to one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to cover Phase One architectural.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Gentlemen, thanks a lot for all the questions.
Thanks for coming.
We're trying this. All right, we're moving on to new business requests for funds, public safety, building, geotech studies. Chad?
Police and fire station replacement, potential relocation project remain a top priority of the city's council goal to improve rent. With the park location renewed for consideration, the city is exploring other options. Is included the possibility of expanding the current site to a potential end acquisition of power as well as locating across the time they have a comparable site for the proposed acquisition from the original. In my earlier update, no, that is no longer true. Pending council approval of an architect, the next step will be to begin diligence or conceptual designs can be developed. Savage requesting up to forty thousand for builders from the building reserve fund to conduct geotechnical geotech studies as both the current site and another site that one becomes available or the structure is headed in that direction. These studies are essential because fire station and police station will be a critical reconstruction of buildings located in a tsunami and earthquakes on making it viable to assess the site's geological stability, stability and risks. A geotech study includes services such as preliminary review of geological information, subsurface explorations, laboratory testing, engineering analysis of a preparation of geotechnical report. These results will provide crucial information for the architect to develop the most cost-effective design while ensuring the building meets structural requirements necessary with fan sizing and tsunami hazards and serve fire and police departments. So you have your options there. Allocate up to forty thousand of public safety building geotech studies. Allocate a different amount or take other actions. Financial analysis, the building reserve fund currently has two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, but will have one hundred and twenty-three dollars and two, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars remaining after the Phase One architect awards approved. If both the architect and the geotech contracts are worthy, the reserve fund will have eight, three thousand, two hundred and thirty-six remaining.
Okay, one thing we need to get away from is calling this a fire station because it is a public safety building. We want to get that settled. It's none of this, just a fire station.
Yeah, no, sorry. My point was more about the critical vulnerable structure side of things and calling out the fire and the police station.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
I, I have a question about that.
Okay.
If the work with property is no longer on the table, do we need to take option three as far as council options and take other actions necessary required by council? And just say, we're gonna, we're gonna authorize up to forty thousand from the building reserve fund to conduct geological testing studies at the current site and at another site to be determined.
That could be just from the recommendation.
Yeah, that could be just an amendment that we straight forward way and replace it with second site.
Okay.
Well, if you go to recommendation, staff recommends council motion to approve the request for up to forty thousand to conduct geotech studies at two potential public safety building sites.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have one other issue that goes along with that is is that we have the geotech that is ready to go if they are selected or if, if we're able to get funding. And it's relatively soon or in our timeline. We have a possibility of starting this work, I think, on the eleventh of this month. Jesse?
The ten.
Of this month. So with only one site so far that we have for sure and no direction on the other at this point, what we would be doing is bringing in a geotech firm. And if we had to bring them in again for another site, this may be more expensive than the forty thousand dollars. Because I think their intention was to come in and have a drilling rig come in once to do two jobs rather than twice to do two jobs. So staff would then say, is there, you know, any other site that we want to consider at this moment? Or are we prepared that this might be more expensive if we just do one geotech site instead of now?
We, because it wasn't noticed on our agenda. We would have to have a special council meeting to consider the school site and discuss this.
And, and we would also need to, to negotiate a temporary access easement so the work could be done. And I know that Carrie is pretty busy, but we could probably get that.
Robert is.
Yeah. So I don't know, I don't know if it makes sense to push it out a week so that you guys have an opportunity to have hopefully notice this and have a conversation or whether or I guess on Monday, I don't know, Monday would work for a special council. We, we just need, we needed enough advance notice in order to notice this thing.
Okay.
But then.
Yeah, so Jesse, you're most familiar with the geotech situation and what their availability was. If it looks like we may have to push this back a little bit, what would that lead to your timeline?
Um, I was just about to email him actually, and I, and I just, maybe we could push it out like two weeks, which buys us a little bit of time to figure this out. And I don't think two weeks would probably make or break us. I think what we'd like to avoid is like a two months delay. That's probably, that's too long. So let me, let me see about two weeks or so. I don't think that's going to be a big deal. And that, I think we're going to need that time to get our ducks in a row a little bit.
Okay, all right.
Then we can schedule a meeting here as soon as possible and we've got a little bit of time for that.
Find out when everybody's available for another city council meeting. And a work session. Okay.
We could do it on one night at the office.
Yeah, start in the afternoon and go.
Or, you know, the day before the planning commission meeting, so I don't have to go.
What day is that?
Thursday, then it would be Wednesday of next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we setting this aside for now or are we gonna?
So I think that you should go forward, in my opinion, you would go forward with the amount for the forty thousand dollars and then maybe with a, a site to be determined.
Yeah. And then we can have the meeting in order to determine what the second site is.
Can we just read the recommendation as the motion?
Allocate, okay, I make a motion, we allocate up to forty thousand dollars for public safety building geotech studies.
I should. Okay. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, council.
All right, now. Here comes the fun. The pick 'em from FEMA. Chad?
I can do this one.
Okay, Peter?
So obviously we were hoping to have data from FEMA. Well, in August, but in advance of this meeting, we don't. So we don't know, we have an idea of what the map might look like. We don't have it. I am worried that if we do a moratorium, that that won't be in compliance with our state land use full ten, just a straight up moratorium. My suggestion in what Garrett and I have discussed with Chad and Angelina is that hybrid fourth, at least we start out with that. That would, that would show that we're trying to comply on the timeline as required. And then when we actually get the maps, we can take a hard look. And if we need to revisit this and go with a different option, we can do it at that time. But in the interim, this, the, the hybrid, which would, we'd be adopting their maps and then giving property owners the ability to come in with that kind of natural survey, which is a form of flexible, but will be more expensive and time consuming. So to the extent that the map has errors or something like that, it would give an owner flexibility to come in. Once we actually get the maps and the other stuff, then I think it makes sense to revisit this. But again, I'd, I'd like to demonstrate the certainty of the map, assuming we get it. And then the flexibility in case it's wrong. And then you guys probably noticed in your packet a letter from Governor Kotek to FEMA just kind of saying, what are you doing? And how do you expect this to meet your timelines? And I certainly appreciate that because I think the exact same thing. But hybrid four, I think, would give us the, hopefully the best of both worlds and we can always revisit it once we have the data we need. So that's kind of my recommendation.
So if I revisit it, does that mean that we can completely change our mind on going?
Yeah, I mean, you, you, the options are moratorium, which I'm really worried about the legality of us doing that given her emergency declaration. The FEMA's maps, which probably going to work for most of it, but might not work for all property owners because it has, it has a certain more certainty, but less flexibility to look at habitat. And then that third option, which isn't clear and objective, and all of our requirements for land use in Oregon are clear and objective. So the hybrid gives us the clear and objective standard. So the hybrid gives us the clear and objective standards that were required by state law to have. And also the flexibility of a property owner or the city saying, hey, this, this map just doesn't look like the reality. So we want to go through this separate process and yeah.
Okay. I make motion that we direct the planning commission to pursue the hybrid model ordinance and habitat assessment option that we have as number four. Second. Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Council concerns. Do you have any concern, Preston? No, I'm not.
I have no concern.
But thank you for it. Do you have any concern?
I have one concern in a public letter. It was a phrase stated that I demanded something of a citizen. And I would just like to publicly put on record that I have never demanded anything from any citizen. That is not true.
So, okay, Dana?
No concerns at this time.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Second and say aye.
Second and say aye. Thanks so much. All right.
Hey, thanks for coming here.
Thank you, Garrett.
And I hope all is well. My heart goes out to you. Heart thurs to your committee.